I'd like to reconvene the meeting for the St. Mary's County Board of Education for Wednesday, October 10, 2018, and we will begin with the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
May I have a motion to approve the agenda?
I move approval of the agenda as presented.
Do you have a second?
I have a second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. We'll begin with board reports. Lake, you're first.
Alright, good morning, everyone. I hope you all are having a wonderful week. On September 26, 2018, I attended an S2S, otherwise known as student-to-student workshop convention, sort of deal. There were about four or five different schools. There was Leonardtown High School, Grape Mills High School, Patuxent High, and Huntingtown High. And basically, what we did there was we all sat down, down at the PAX Naval Air Station at Rivers Edge, and we basically talked about the S2S program. And student-to-student is basically a program facilitated across the nation, actually, which is something new that I found out. I thought it was just here. But it's across the nation where students or other students will mentor new students, whether they're transfers, freshmen, or international students, and they'll basically help them acclimate to their new school environment. So basically, this whole convention was to find or to network, to collaborate ideas, and to find new ways to help implement new students into the community. So basically, we just got to know each other, we shared some ideas, and we had a lot of good ideas were presented, and that's basically it. And I'm repeating myself. So, thank you.
Last week I attended, it's called the Personal Excellent Partnership. And what that is, is it's a partnership between the Naval Air Station and our school systems. It also, they also work with Calver County School Systems and along with some of the private schools. So it was really nice, you know, to get to see the great things that the people that work on base, I forget how many people, I think it's like 500, I think, I think it's like around 500 people work with our school systems from on base. That's, you know, the military and contractors. Afterwards, Ms. Simpson, who is here today, made arrangements for us to go over to the test pilot school and see what wonderful things they're doing over there. They also do work with the school systems, both private and public, to show the students things that, you know, some of the neat things that they're doing there and the partnerships that they have with the schools. So that was a lot of fun, and thank you so much for, you know, arranging that. I had a wonderful time. And also, it is the season for fundraisers with our different school systems, whether it's book fairs or Yankee Candle or t-shirts. I am sporting my t-shirt from Spring Bridge for their fundraiser. So just make sure that when, you know, if you can, help support the students in the schools, makes great Christmas presents, birthday presents, et cetera. So, and that's all I have.
Good morning, everybody. I attended the 51st Blessings of the Fleet that was held, of course, in Colton's Point and St. Clement's Island. And surprisingly, for the number of years I've been, it's been two days, Saturday and Sunday. It was condensed to just Saturday. It was a very successful program. I also attended the Mabe Conference in Ocean City, and we had a series of workshops. I attended one that was, I found, very enlightening. Being a contractor for most of my career in government, I've always noticed that if you get a program within a short period of time, it keeps, it grows, sort of Parkinson's Law. In this case, the speaker was talking about the NOTS Commission recommendations. And there's around $345 million facility appropriations for the state. And the NOTS Commission essentially was looking at ways that they could save money. You know, it could cut down on scope of work of what they're doing. And they had 35 very, very, what I consider comprehensive recommendations. One of them I thought was quite interesting. It was the change orders. A change order in a contract is if you have, you negotiate a contract for a set amount of money, and then invariably, in that life of the contract, there's going to be changes, either initiated by the owner, by site conditions, et cetera. So what they said is, when the requests come up for change order, the county was only approving 2.5% of the change orders. If they didn't approve them, then the change orders had to revert back to local funding. And so what they said is, it's not a very good, efficient way of spending our time reviewing all these documents and only approving 2.5%. So they streamlined that along with many, many other recommendations. And I thought it was very enlightening that they were trying to basically take the efforts in the facilities group and making them smaller. So that's, that was a very important thing for me to attend.
Let's see. I also attended the Mabe Conference last week. In addition to presenting with Donna Cronin, who's the General Counsel for the Subcabinet of the School Safety Act, we presented on the act to various board members about the requirements, what we've completed so far, what's coming down the pike, so to speak. And then I also, along Jim's lines, I attended a session on the Kerwin Commission and all of the recommendations and changes that they are going to hopefully have complete by December 31st on how the face of Maryland education will change. The goal is to have everything completed by December 31st, so then they can begin presenting to the legislators to see what will or will not be funded during this session. So more to come on that. It was very interesting. I would say there's some very lofty goals and that have a pretty hefty price tag with them. So more to come on that. Oh, and congratulations to Mrs. Washington, who was sworn in as another, for her third term on the Board of Directors. Thank you.
Thank you. It's my pleasure to serve. I also attended the Maryland Association of Boards of Education Annual Conference in Ocean City, where Kathy Allen and I served as members on that committee. This is our state association, which is comprised of all the boards of education with all the counties in Baltimore and Baltimore City. It was a lot of new information. Also, they talked about equity, safety, integration, mental health, as the Kerwin Commission, communications, and it was a, several days of a lot of enlightening experiences. They had keynote speakers, hot topics, conversation with Mabe Presidents, the State Superintendent arrived, and she spoke with us. And a good thing, all of the artwork in the booklet at the bottom of each page was created by St. Mary's County Public Schools students. So this is in our program booklet. And also, they were made into note cards, which were given to all of the keynote speakers, presenters at the conference. And I want to thank the James Forrest Career and Technology Center, their teacher and the students for doing a brilliant job by displaying the exemplary artwork that our students do in St. Mary's County. So I'm sure that artwork in that note card form is around the country and the state of Maryland to highlight the accomplishment of our school system and our Forrest Center students. Thank you very much.
As you've heard, I also attended, and I attended a number of sessions. They keep us going from early in the morning until late in the day. And I was especially interested in the latest in school law, some of the things that will be coming down the pike. And it just is, it's a great opportunity to not only hear what's going on, but also to interact with board members and superintendents from across the state to find out how they're approaching various issues and what perhaps is bubbling up in their communities. It's information that is very useful and we take with us and informs us for the coming year. So, thank you, sir.
Yeah, it was a great, it really was. It was a great opportunity. And it was a great opportunity for superintendents to spend some time with the, with the boards outside of their counties. And I really do appreciate the opportunity. It's football weather. High school football last week.
Ninety degrees.
Well, doesn't feel like football weather.
This Friday it should.
But grabbed by this Friday. Go out and see a high school football game. They're really, they're wonderful. Whoever wins or loses, they're, it's a great evening. Saw Chopticon in Leonardtown last Monday, and then Chopticon Grape Mills on Friday. It really is great. And you get to see our kids out supporting their team. It's a wonderful night out. And I think that homecoming is this week for Leonardtown. Is it also for, it's just Leonardtown this week, I think.
Chopticon's next week.
Next week, yeah.
And Grape Mills.
Leonardtown High School has been transformed, as it often is during homecoming week, with decorations throughout the building and a great deal of spirit. I thank Lake for coming today, dressed so exceptionally professional as it is. I think pajama.
Basically Senior Skip Day because it's PSAT Day.
Oh, my gosh.
And I passed by the school. No one is at school besides.
Don't say that.
Holy week.
I knew Kane.
Drive today.
It's just, it's really, we hear a great deal about all of the things that aren't right. Take a few moments to talk to kids, come visit our schools, come out to a game. Even if you don't have a child attending, see everything that's right. You know, we have great-
Marching bands.
Marching bands in the halftime, and you know, and then, of course, we'll be rolling into our plays and performances and things like that. But it really is, it's really quite wonderful. I am looking forward to tomorrow. Tomorrow is our first gathering of the Superintendent Students Leadership Advisory Council. This is the fourth year of SLAC. It is chaired by Ms. Lake Meadows. We are, this year, we're going to start, as we gather all of our kids together from our three high schools, we're going to be talking about connecting. And as our focus for this year, we're going to talk about advocacy. How we advocate for ourselves, how we advocate for our peers, and then ultimately, how we advocate for the change we want in our, in our community. And I'm really looking forward to that conversation. We're going to start tomorrow with making connections with everybody. I want to highlight a really nice piece of artwork. Other than Casey Page's Children at the James A. Forrest Career and Technology Center, they were really fantastic. Marianne Williams has been working with the crew to create short videos on a whole host of topics. And when we started this year, we were talking about how important it is, so safety, how do we make ourselves the most safe that we possibly can? Safety starts with you and me. See something, say something, and the connections we have with one another. So we really wanted to create, create a piece of video, a piece of artwork that kind of talks about the value of that connection. And so this video, we posted it a day and a half ago. I think it's been viewed by over 4,000 people so far. It's traveling all over Facebook, so it's multimodal platforms on Facebook and YouTube and whatever else. But it's really, it's a great piece of work, and I think that that's what we need to focus on at the beginning of the school year. And so with that, Dr. Marr.
Every day, we make connections. In our classrooms, in the hallways, on the bus, every interaction is a chance to connect. And we never know what impact those connections will have. Small gestures, empathy, and words of encouragement make a difference. They help make connections. We want our students to make connections with what they're learning and with each other. Those connections form the foundation of their success. Why do we do what we do? Because it makes a difference? Every connection we make is a connection to the future. Those connections matter, and you never know what connections last. Everyone can do one small thing to make someone's day, to inspire them. Those connections matter, and you never know what connections last. So make every single one count. So who makes a difference? You do.
So Ms. Williams is in that closet over there. Very nicely done. It was really quite sweet. And if we all become the best versions of ourselves, what can't we do? So I can't wait till tomorrow. Thank you very much, Dr. Marr, for giving me a hand. And that's all I have for you.
I have two quick things to add. Number one, last week, the state of Maryland rolled out their TIPS hotline-
Yes.
-on a statewide level. So if for some reason you don't want to call us or St. Mary's County-
You want to hit the big blue button?
Right. You can do it through an app that is out there right now. And then secondly, congratulations to the Charter School. When they were here a few weeks ago-
Oh, sorry.
-they talked about they had applied for a $900,000 federal grant to, you know, to advance their, their expansion plan and some things. And they received word, I believe, last week-
Yes.
-that it was awarded in the full amount that they had requested.
Yes, so they, so they have a million, a million, almost a million dollars worth of capital to be invested.
Yes. So congratulations to them.
Fantastic.
And I believe, didn't they say that they would be using those, those funds over the next three years?
Correct. Right, yes. It's not $900,000 all this year. It's dispersed over three years. Yes, that is correct. So, correct.
Alright, thank you.
Alright. Let's see. Recognitions. Mr. Jeffrey Thompson, School Bus Safety Week.
Hey, good morning.
Good morning.
Good morning.
Okay, every day, every school day morning, nearly 18,000 students board St. Mary's County Public School buses and are greeted by a certified school bus driver whose mission is to transport those students to and from school safely. While many of the students and even our school staff members only know their bus driver as "the bus driver," they would be surprised to know that they come from a wide range of backgrounds. Not only are they our neighbors, our family members and parents of our friends, but they are also our retired naval officers, retired police officers, former teachers, business owners, clergy, stay-at-home parents, immigrants, and even a former state's attorney. And that is just a small list that covers a wide range of where our drivers come from. Our drivers with diverse backgrounds do a tremendous job every day, not only handling the ever-increasing amount of traffic and road issues, but also trying to manage as many as 70 students on their bus. Being a bus driver and a bus attendant is a challenge, and we're very thankful for what they do. I have two compliment stories that I just want to read real quick that came in this year. This one came in in September. It says, "My son is Down Syndrome, and every morning he will not get up on the bus on his own. I would have to carry him and also have to put him in his chair. The driver and attendant have tried everything to encourage him to get on the bus by himself. We would praise him, we'd clap our hands, we'd give him encouragement, and lots of encouragement. However, this morning, the driver showed up, and she had a toy fire truck, and boom, my son went on the bus on his own. Hooray." The driver and attendant got, go above and beyond in their duties and responsibilities. They are innovative, caring, responsible, creative, safe, and awesome individuals. This means a lot to us as parents. Thank you for having them as my son's bus driver and attendant. The next story is about a pre-K student. I wanted to give a shout out to my son's bus driver. She is absolutely wonderful to him. She always has a book for him to read on his way home and puts him with students that help him on the bus. He cries when he gets on the bus in the morning, and evidently in the afternoon as well, because he says he misses me, lol. The bus driver always lets me know when he's done really well on the bus, and she is just an all-out nice lady. I wanted to give credit where credit is due. So these are fine examples of what our bus drivers do, and definitely play a lot into the connect theme for what our bus drivers do to connect with our students. And many of them will have them for many years and, you know, always be remembered. So today we come together because National School Bus Safety Week has been designated the week of October 22nd to 26th. And Wednesday, October 24th, will be designated as School Bus Driver and School Bus Attendant Appreciation Day in St. Mary's County. We have a resolution that we'll read in a moment to recognize our bus drivers and bus attendants for their professionalism, dedication, devotion. And today I have two bus drivers with us that represent all of our bus drivers and the fine jobs that they do. Virginia Carmen Kearns, she's been, was certified in August of 2009, and she drives bus 595 for the Chesapeake Charter School, speaking of the Charter School we just mentioned. And then we also have Andrea Parmalo, if I pronounce that right. Andrea, I always-
It's okay. Parmalo.
Parmalo. She was certified in September of 2013. She drives bus 543. She services a very long 7th District route for Chopticon High School, and she spends the remainder of her day shuttling students back and forth between the Forrest Center and Chopticon. And she also services the fire rescue program, transferring students between the Forrest Center and Hollywood Volunteer Firehouse, and in between also job sites. So she stays busy all day long. We did have another gentleman, but he couldn't make it this morning, who's Steve Woodburn, who helps us out a lot. He was a volunteer on our accident review committee last year, but he ran a little late, so he couldn't be here this morning. So now we'd like to go ahead and read the resolution. Dr. Smith, if you would join us?
So we have, well, we also have a proclamation from the governor as well, perhaps. Would you like that?
Sure.
There you go.
This is for School Bus Safety Week.
School Bus Safety Week. Whereas the week of October 22 through 26, 2018, has been designated as National School Bus Safety Week in the school systems across the great nation. And whereas, school bus safety is an integral part of our educational program, and whereas the efforts of our school bus drivers and school bus attendants in transporting our students safely to and from school each day are recognized for the importance, now therefore be it resolved that the Board of Education of St. Mary's County recognizes Wednesday, October 24th, 2018, as School Bus Driver and School Bus Driver, School Bus Attendant Appreciation Day in St. Mary's County Public Schools, and that all school staff and students are encouraged to recognize this event and participate in its observance and assign this 10th day of October, 2018, by board and myself. So, thank you very much.
My pleasure.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
And I would like to just say that Mr. Thompson is correct. Connections, connections, connections. You are the first people they see associated with the school system, and you are the last person they see associated with the school system. And you are the ones who set their day and ultimately finish their day. So I couldn't thank you enough, and certainly for you for transporting all of them. Thank you, thank you, thank you. So with the Chesapeake Public Charter School, you, what age group do you usually transport? Is it-
Kind of garden through age.
Can you, the whole, you get the whole scope. Thank you very much for that. Thank you.
Right. Mr. Lyon, someone? There you are.
Good morning.
Good morning. Red Ribbon, Red Ribbon Week.
So, board, good morning again. As you know, every year we strive to focus on substance abuse, misuse, education. No change this year. This is all part of the same thing, making connections with kids. And I've asked several of our community partners to join us this morning. Kind of twofold purpose. One is, we're going to be introducing the two new SROs for our middle schools, if you haven't had the opportunity to meet them. So at this, I'm going to call up Lieutenant Rob Russell, St. Mary's County Sheriff's Office, Sergeant Todd Fleanor, Corporal Jamie Davis, Deputy First Class Matt Lawrence, and First Sergeant Michael Laney, who is the new First Sergeant at the Maryland State Police Barrett.
Mary Ellen Crace from St. Mary's County Health Department.
So without this group, we don't deliver DARE. And I'm happy to report, I think Jamie and Matt, you just graduated from DARE training, as instructors, certified instructors, so they're going to be putting that back in the middle schools this year. And of course, our Adopt a School program, reaching out to the elementary schools, and the partnerships that we have with the St. Mary's County Sheriff's Office, the Maryland State Police, and the Health Department continue all the time, focusing on things. I know you've heard of many other things that we've done recently as well. It doesn't happen without the commitment of Sheriff Cameron and the relationship that we have with the Sheriff's Office, and of course, Dr. Brewster in the Health Department. So again, this year, we will be kicking off Red Ribbon Week and having lots of fun activities in the schools, and everybody will be helping and supporting us with that. So I don't know, anything, would you like to say anything? Lieutenant?
They're just, Jamie and Matt are super excited to start teaching DARE.
They've enjoyed their time in the middle schools so far. So Jamie has Leonardtown Middle School and Martyr Brent Middle School, and Matt has Esperanza Middle School and Spring Bridge Middle School. So, yeah. So with that-
Do I get to come up and read another resolution?
Alright.
Without reading, without glasses, so. No, no, I'm good, I'm good. Whereas preventing substance abuse and other risk behaviors by school-aged youth remains a priority for St. Mary's County Public Schools. And whereas, a key strategy in substance abuse prevention is educating parents, students, and the community at large on substance abuse issues and the resources available in our community to help prevent this high-risk behavior. And whereas, the United States Department of Justice and the Drug Enforcement Administration has designated October 23rd, 2018, through October 31st, 2018, to be designated as National Red Ribbon Week. Now therefore be it resolved that the Board of Education of St. Mary's County recognizes the ongoing community partnership with the St. Mary's County Sheriff's Office due to provide drug abuse resistance education, better known as DARE, programming in all our SMCPS middle schools, and the local activities coordinated to support nationwide efforts for continued awareness through National Red Ribbon Week. Thus, the Board of Education of St. Mary's County declares October 23rd through 2018, through October 31st, 2018, to be National Red Ribbon Week in all of our St. Mary's County Public Schools. The Board encourages all students and supporting adults to learn what they can do to prevent substance abuse and make a personal commitment to the mission of the Red Ribbon Campaign, striving towards a drug-free America. Sign this day. So, thank you very much.
Thank you.
My pleasure.
Thank you.
Thanks, guys. And Brett, so you can stick around for a photo.
Yes, we can take a five-minute break.
Five-minute break for, so we'll start with y'all. Y'all?
Y'all.
The New Yorker's saying y'all.
The New Yorker's saying y'all.
Okay, may I have a motion to approve the consent agenda?
I move approval of the consent agenda as presented.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Others in favor?
Aye.
Aye. opposed? Motion carried. And we've flip-flopped. So uh, first up are informational items, which will be our twenty-eighteen audited financial statements with Mr. Lehman and Ms. McCourt and Mr. Springer, whoever else wants to join.
Just me.
Okay.
Good morning, everyone.
Good morning.
So far, so good. All right, well, good morning, everyone. I'm Chris Lehman. I was the uh, engagement partner on this year's uh, financial statement and single audit. Um, that was performed by our firm SB and Company. Uh, this is our second year doing your audited, uh, annual audited financial statements and uh, federal single audit of uh, federal spending. You'll see on the slides here the scope of services we were engaged to perform. We were engaged to perform an audit of the June fiscal year-end, June thirty, twenty-eighteen financial statements of the board. Uh, we assist with preparation of the financial statements as well as we do the uh, the CFR Part Two Hundred Single Audit, which is an audit of the schedule of uh, federal spending and federal audit programs of the board. As well as this uh, presentation here represents any observations uh, that we've made through the audit process as well as our required communications uh, under firm and industry standards. I also have my contact information in the back of this presentation. That way if there's any questions or concerns that uh, management or man, management clearly knows how to reach me, but if there's any at the board level, I've got my contact information to make myself available at any, anytime. Um, here's just a summary of the results of the audit. We've issued a unmodified opinion. That's a clean opinion. That would be the best opinion we can give under professional standards. The most significant change within the financial statements this year was the implementation of a new accounting standard that's required for any governmental entity that's got a other post-employment benefit plan that uh, resulted in a restatement of net position for a negative two-hundred-and-forty-four million dollars, which I do have a slide, uh, I'll wa, walk through that accounting very briefly. Uh, we did not discover any instances of fraud. A financial statement audit is not a fraud audit, but we are required to have a healthy skepticism that fraud could be perpetrated uh, by anyone at any time. We didn't discover any instances of material weaknesses in the internal control environment. We received the full cooperation of management. So any questions or records that we requested, we were able to obtain adequate answers or documentation to support those transactions. And lastly, through the compliance, uh, single audit testing, there were no findings that we had that would have been included within the single audit report. The significant areas of the audit, uh, we look at um, cash controls and bank reconciliations, uh, collectability of accounts receivable, the fixed asset accounting as far as proper capitalization and depreciation of those items, completeness of liabilities to make sure that transactions that are occurring uh, near at year-end get properly uh, accounted for if they're liabilities within the twenty-eighteen financial statements. We look at revenue recognition policies, the uh, assumptions and the accounting related to pension and OPEB. We spend a fair amount of time assessing that and as well as grant compliance from a single audit perspective. As part of the audit, we assess the control environment. Um, we use a model that has five interrelated components. Uh, to the left, you'll see the first three items, the environment, the risk assessment, the uh, control activities. And the last two items are the information and communication and the monitoring of the internal controls. And in our assessment of the environment, we concluded that the environment was effective for the period under audit. Uh, in addition, looking at the key processes that affect the financial statements, the treasury estimation process, financial reporting, disbursement or expenditure cycle, we concluded that the design and operation of those controls were effective during the audit period. As well as payroll, revenue, and fixed assets. Uh, and lastly, the compliance uh, from a single audit perspective and the IT environment, we also concluded uh, was designed and operating effectively during the audit. Uh, this slide just shows a summary of the key accounts. Um, a lot of these tied into the key risk areas that I highlighted a couple of slides back. Uh, but these are specific accounts on the financial statements as well as the main audit assertion we were testing for. Typically an asset, we would look to make sure it exists. Uh, conversely, a liability, we want to make sure it's complete and that there's nothing missing within those accounts. So you'll see the account, the audit assertions there. And we've had no uh, audit adjustments uh, through any of those accounts. So that would just speak to the quality of information within the general ledger system. And as you get information during the year, um, it just speaks to the accuracy and the integrity of that. And it's not like it takes the year-end audit to clean up the figures to report, you know, what they should be, so. Um, and then lastly, just uh, mostly revenue and uh, expense line items. Um, looking at that to make sure the transactions have occurred, uh, depreciation, valuation. We've also had no audit adjustments within any of those accounts as well. Um, from a financial statement perspective, I've included here a budgetary comparison schedule. Which are included as supplemental schedules within the financial statements that we issued. You'll see total revenue, the final amended budget was at roughly two-hundred-and-thirty-five million compared to actual revenue of two-hundred-and-twenty-nine million, which would be um, a variance of roughly five-point-eight million. On the expenditure side, you'll see a total final amended budget of roughly uh, two-hundred-and-thirty-five million, so a balance budget. Um, on the actual budgetary basis, expenses were under budget at two-hundred-and-twenty-nine, uh, sorry, two-hundred-and-twenty-two-point-nine million for a positive change in budgetary fund balance of six-point-two million. You'll see there is a favorable, favorable variance from the expenditure standpoint. So net-net, there's a positive uh, variance of six-point-two million when you compare budget to actual figures. Um, from a fund balance perspective, this will be looking at your general fund, um, equity, if you will, or uh, fund balance and what's, what's available for the next fiscal year. So you'll see just a three-year comparison. From sixteen to seventeen, fund balance was relatively flat at about twelve-point-six million. This year there was an increase to thirteen-point-two million of, of fund balance, which uh, there's three categories. Non-spendable, uh, is just an accounting term for an asset you physically can't spend. So a prepaid asset uh, is what's sitting in non-spendable. Assigned would just be uh, you know, purchase orders that rolled over, encumbrances, items that management has a plan for how to use those funds in future years is what represents assigned, which you can see the, basically the rest of the uh, fund balances has been assigned. If there's anything left over that hasn't been planned for how it's going to be used in future periods, that would fall into unassigned. But you'll see here management's de, developed a plan to how to, or for how to use those fund balances going forward.
And that'll come forward next because we have.
Yes, I believe that's following this discussion.
We have a plan.
Yep. I'd highlighted at the beginning of the presentation that there was a implementation of a new accounting standard, which applies to any government entity that's got a other post-employment benefit plan where the accounting standards that are GASP's changed the model for how to account for um, the liability or, or the promises to, to cover um, OPEB benefits for retirees, where they've gone away from a funding model to basically projecting out what's the, what's the liability or value of all the promises that have been made to current and, and retired employees to cover the cost of health insurance. You know, discounted back to today's dollars, um, which that figure is subtracted from any assets that have been set aside in the trust today, which um, if you, if you project all those benefits out, discount it back, that resulted in a restatement of roughly two-hundred-and-forty-four million dollars. If you look at the year-end financial statements, the net OPEB liability is roughly three-hundred-and-twenty-three million dollars. That's clearly a long-term liability, so um, it's, it's how GASP's changed the accounting to also to mirror what's been done with pensions, where there was the pension standard implemented a couple of years ago that also resulted in a restatement and an increase in that liability from, you know, basically moving away from the funding policy, um, or funding requirement. Is there any questions on that piece? Uh, from a single audit perspective, again, this is an audit of the federal uh, federal grants that are received and spent by the board during the fiscal year. There's a uh, for a low-risk auditee, which we consider the board low-risk, there's a twenty percent coverage requirement of the total spending. So the total spending of federal money during the year was roughly, excuse me, eight, eighteen-point-two million. Uh, we had selected two major programs for testing, special education as well as Perkins. That got us over the twenty percent requirement, so you meet the minimum uh, percentage requirement there. And as I alluded to, there's no single audit findings that were included within the report. Um, after issuing this report, we also file a form with the, with the federal government called a data collection form, which formally acknowledges that the single audit's been completed. The last few slides, I won't go through every bullet point, but this would be uh, firm or industry communications that we're required to have with the board. Although we're planning to issue, or although we've issued a clean opinion, if there were difficulties getting through the audit or if we had disagreements with management, we'd be required to bring that to the board's attention. Um, but there's nothing negative through the process that I would be required to bring to your attention uh, through the audit process. Also previously, we met with the audit committee to kind of go through the numbers in more detail. Um, I normally don't like surprises, so if we had found fraud or something like that, I would try not to wait till that meeting or today. I'd try to bring it up as, as soon as it comes up. But like I said, there were no disagreements or anything that would say uh, there is a red flag from a um, from an, excuse me, from an audit perspective. Uh, any questions?
What is your sampling coverage for the audit in general? I know you have the twenty percent for uh, grants or uh, the major programs, but what is your sampling for the audit overall?
So the twenty percent in that case would just say we have to cover roughly three million dollars of the federal expenses. Once we do that and we select a program, and this also applies to the audit when we look at transactions. So I'll just try to relate it back to that twenty percent that came up. We would take all the expenses that relate to those two federal programs we tested. We put them in buckets basically of how were the dollars spent? So were they salaries? Were they, and then most of them are salaries, but if they were salaries, if they were consultants, fringe benefits, things of that nature, we put them in buckets. And then we have a materiality that we apply, both at the financial statement level and the single audit level, that then if those trans, if the, if those accounts are material, we would select typically somewhere between twenty-five and sixty transactions within each account. And we do that both at the single audit level and both at the financial statement level. So if you looked at it from the single audit standpoint, per grant, we're looking at at least forty transactions within each of the material accounts, so. Um, and then on the financial statement level, it's a combination of internal controls, substantive testing and uh, analysis. So typically on a balance sheet, we take more of a substantive approach where cash will, will actually make sure all the cash exists by, you know, confirmations, bank statements, making sure the money is in the bank. Whereas revenue or expenses, there's lots and lots of transactions, so we're more likely to rely on internal controls um, because of the volume of transactions. It'd be, it'd be harder to prove out all your expenses uh, if we were going to vouch them all. So that, in that case, we're typically relying on sample sizes, like I alluded to, with those different sample sizes.
All right, thank you.
I have no questions.
Um, are, are we, are you done with everything on your presentation?
Yes.
Okay, just making.
We can go to the last slide that has your contact information. That's a, that's a great finish.
Well, I don't know, it's got my picture on it.
That's nice, well, there you go. Comparatively there.
Mrs. Weaver, to back up your, or to just shed more light on your questions, if you go to the slide about the evaluation of key processes, since all of the key processes when they came in and did their risk analysis on our side were green, that's what drove what the sample selection was. So if it would have been yellow or red, they would have had to do a wider, they would have cast a wider net to see if there were any problems.
Okay.
Or we would ex, or we would expand, you know, different testing, like uh, substantive testing, we may do more.
Right.
If the controls aren't effective.
So I think, I think the big takeaway here, which um, for this audit, is to keep in mind we have a, you know, over a two-hundred-and-twenty-five million dollar budget. So um, I kind of joked in the audit exit conference meeting that we kind of hit the trifecta, but we didn't, we had, you know, no material weaknesses. We had no single audit findings, which I don't know if anyone here really grasps how rare that is on a two-hundred.
All the accounts in the room say.
But I mean, and so does Rob, but I mean, having, you know, done this for a number of years, to have no single audit findings on a budget of that size is pretty rare. And then also um, obviously just, you know, the unmodified opinion, which, you know, we would all expect. So um, I think hats off to Tammy and Rob and everyone on your staff for watching every penny and putting in the internal controls that we needed in order to ensure that all of those boxes stay green and um, you know, and that every, you know, there's no risk of the, of any transaction being the potential to be a fraudulent one or going in the wrong direction, so. Excellent job.
Um, this is the kind of audit that we really appreciate. And even if it wasn't one-hundred percent, at least the discrepancies or the adjustment would be noted to us so that we could make them. So kudos to Mrs. McCord and her department for doing an excellent job. Thank you.
Um, I sat on the uh, audit committee this year. I, I had been off of it. Um I sat on the uh audit committee this year, I I had been off of it for some years. I have to say, this is the best audit um we've received uh in that that I can recall. Um and it is it is heartening to know that um. The board has worked to to make sure that we are doing our due diligence and our responsibilities, um but we could not. We could not do so in the best way without the work that's being done in finance through Mrs. McCord, Mr. Springer and the rest. And I I do hope that you will take back to your department um our profound thanks. Uh this is not a um a quick or an easy piece, um there are so many things that can go wrong. Uh but you have put measures in place to ensure that to the best of your ability, um under your watch. Nothing will go wrong and very much appreciated, so thank you for all your hard work. And Mr. Lein, it's been a pleasure working with you, thank you very much.
I'm just gonna drive the point home, getting no audit findings, right? Every transaction that they pulled, right? That meant that every I was dotted and T was crossed, like everything worked as it was supposed to. Like they didn't find any exceptions to any financial piece of paper or account that they pulled. Across all of the accounts for over two hundred million dollars.
Also to their, also to their credit, um what the single audit administrative compliance rules changed. Um a couple of years ago, and I think, you know, we do lots of government audits, I think. Um the board here was the only client that hired us to look at the look at their policies in advance of having to implement the new. Administrative requirements, so that that also helped speak to it. In doing the analysis, there were really weren't that many gaps. Between what the new administrative requirements were compared to what was being done here. Um a lot of it was, it it probably affected more not-for-profits than it did governments in applying the the new standard, but um. That also speaks, cause I can't think of any other client that.
Proactively.
We were more of telling clients, hey, be ready, where they were, hey, can you help us be ready?
Well, and I have to say, you know, every year we get this book and um and so when I got the the first draft, there are several pieces that I looked for. You know, what was the opinion, and then I'm flipping through the book going, okay, where where do we have work to do? And I ca- I I went through it three times, I'm like, did I miss it? No, it's not there.
Bad stuff is always in the footnote, right?
Yes.
Bad stuff is always in the footnote, so.
Yep.
Setting a new bar. Well, the bar, it's as hard as the bar can get.
Yep.
Yeah, pretty much, yes.
We'll remember today, Mr. Springer, we'll remember today.
Does anyone else have any more questions?
Well, thank you.
Thank you.
Yeah, so let's talk about how we're doing this year so far.
Mrs. McCord, thank you for putting the exhibit in all as one continuous page. It really helps to be able to scroll through and not to have to have multiple windows open and going back and forth, so thank you.
Well, thanks for my staff for doing that.
Well.
The accounting staff upstairs is absolutely phenomenal, and that's why you got the replay that you got. But not only that, the tone is truly set at the top with the board. Dr. Smith, Dr. Montgomery and Dr. Walker. We're all setting the tone at the top to ensure due diligence and compliance, and we're constantly reiterating that with our directors, the principals. Down to the financial secretary, so kudos to everyone that plays a significant part in ensuring due diligence and compliance.
Absolutely.
So for the month of September. Our, oh, sorry. I'm skipping ahead. Our total budget is two hundred and fourteen point four million dollars. That does include one hundred and sixty-five thousand dollar budget adjustment. From that one million dollars. If you recall, one hundred and sixty-five thousand dollars of it was going to the operating and the remainder was going to the CIP. Um we've received forty-three point eight million dollars, leaving a balance currently of one hundred and seventy point five million dollars, so we're recognizing twenty point four seven percent of the budget so far on the revenue side. On the expenditure side. Our encumbrance is outstanding, are at one hundred and sixty-two point four million dollars. That does include all of the encumbrances for all of our salaried staff. Um year-to-date encumbrances and expenses, total one hundred and ninety-two point one million dollars, recognizing an available balance currently of twenty-two point two million dollars. The percentage encumbered or expense currently is at eighty-nine point six percent. Um one area that I'd just like to point out to you, um because it's going to play a part in our next conversation, is our health insurance about halfway down the page. You'll see that that is at tw- twenty-three point six million dollars budgeted. And currently encumbered and or expensed is twenty-three point four million dollars, so we're right on target at ninety-nine point sixteen percent. Projected, very tight, but on target. Are there any questions?
No.
I don't know, I think Jim.
No.
No questions, thank you.
All right, thank you. And then you just wanna roll right into the budget adjustments?
Well, let's talk about fund balance.
So Dr. Walker is joining me up here, because I'll talk about the money and he'll talk about some of the specifics with regards to some of the projects. Oops. So in FY eighteen, we had budgetary savings.
Wait, can I just set this up first? So on the page that he had on the slide where we had the assigned fund balance, this is now going to explain that. If you go on.
The thirteen point.
Right, the thirteen point whatever million that he showed on the on the slide where we had assigned. This is what the plan is for that amount, that's why it's all in assigned, okay? Just to connect the two, sorry.
And I'm gonna connect a little bit more as well, on that budgetary slide that he showed, it said for general fund. So the general fund incorporates both our unrestricted fund and our restricted funds. Typically, when we talk on a monthly basis and we talk about the overall budget, um starting in January, we're focusing predominantly on the unrestricted funds. So the budget before you was on the unrestricted funds, and that's where we typically um recognize the majority of our fund balance. So last year's revenues were recognized at ninety-nine point nine nine percent of budget, which was phenomenal. Um the slight difference was an increase over budget as a result of our interest rates. On the expenditure side, we recognized ninety-seven point oh sep- seven percent of budget. And the savings were significantly as a result of fixed charges, in particular for pharmaceutical rates. Um we're we're gonna be recognizing a rebate, we haven't received the cash in hand yet, however. If under Gatsby, under the governmental standing accounting standards board, if it is estimatable at the end of a fiscal year. Of which it was, CareFirst had already made us aware that we were gonna be recognizing about two point nine million dollars in rebates. This is the highest amount of rebates ever recognized in St. Mary's County public schools. Significantly as a result of negotiated agreement, our education to staff and the staff members' recognition and participation in our plans. So in looking at the individual categories on the screen there, you can see that the majority of our savings, budgetary savings were certainly in fixed charges. Overall, the budgetary savings were six point three million dollars on the expenditure side. So before you is the proposal to utilize a component of that fund balance, and it was all within the assigned category on the prior presentation. Of six million dollars. Two point five million dollars to safety and security CIP, four hundred and seventy-two thousand nine hundred and twenty dollar. Nine hundred and twenty-nine dollars to maintenance CIP, one point four million dollars to healthcare insurance holiday. One hundred and fifty thousand dollars for textbooks and one point five million dollars for computer hardware. So I'd like to take just a minute to kind of talk through some of those components. You've certainly heard enough about safety and security in our prior presentations. So that money will go over to CIP and continue with the plan that you've heard from Mr. Wyant. Maintenance for four hundred and seventy-two thousand dollars.
That money's primarily designated to flooring replacements, over and above that, which we've uh requested and has been approved in our local CIP. Uh there may be uh some deferred projects that have been deferred from previous years that we'll try to include in that money. Um projects get deferred because other things are critical or urgent that need to be, need to take the place of a planned project. And those deferred projects can only be deferred for so long before they become bigger issues. So there'll be a small number of deferred projects, primarily flooring will be used.
Could you provide us when you when you're going through and looking at what deferred projects or projects you're g- besides the flooring? Could you just provide us an update um where?
Communication update, okay for that?
That would be, that would be great, just to see where it's going.
Absolutely.
The one point four million dollars for the health insurance holiday. Um we have that slated for December and January with your approval and of course with the county commissioner approval of that appropriation. And it is recognizing um more than the employee share of the pharmaceutical rebate. The employee contributes about twenty-one percent of their health insurance premium costs, and the board contributes about seventy-nine percent. And then a hundred and fifty thousand dollars for our last phase of our textbook adoption and then computer hardware of one point five million dollars.
And let, keep in mind, the textbooks and the computer hardware were both on last year's budget that we presented to the county commissioners as one-time funds. That we requested, that was not even um.
We never had an.
I'll use the word acknowledged. So um this will, that's where that's coming from, it's a carryover for us on our kind of to-do list from last year.
So the overall budget increase would be six million dollars for the use of fund balance, and you'll see on the screen there are two separate components. There's gonna be the general fund component. Two point five million dollars as an inter-fund transfer that will need to be recognized on the unrestricted fund and then transferred over to the CIP. Four hundred and seventy-two thousand dollars for the maintenance CIP, one point four million dollars healthcare insurance, one hundred and fifty thousand dollars textbooks. One point five million dollars for the computer hardware, so your overall increase to the unrestricted fund will be six million dollars. And then recognizing on the CIP side, the two point five million dollars for safety and security and four hundred and seventy-two thousand dollars for maintenance. So an overall increase to the CIP budget of two point nine million dollars. So one component of it is simply accounting behind the scenes that we have to do. So at this point, um we request your approval of this agenda item as presented.
Okay, well, I would just like to thank you for your presentation, it was extremely thorough, so I have no questions.
Thank you. Uh thank you, you answered me already, thank you.
No, nothing.
I don't, I don't have any questions, thank you.
Thank you. Uh really just a statement, um I think that uh what Mrs. McCord and um finance and and HR have been able to accomplish. Through education of our employees is uh a greater commitment on their part to investing themselves in. Health insurance and um and that is what has made a lot of this saving. Um and this this rebate possible, is their active participation in their own health, their own healthcare and the choices that they're making. Um and I'm very pleased that we are going to be able to turn around and um. And in in essence, reward them for their their great participation by um through this healthcare holiday. I'm also pleased that we're going to be able to address um some of our safety and security items that we have. Um planned out over several years that we'll we'll be able to pull in a little tighter, um and and that also is a great positive, so. Um I think that uh obviously, everything we're doing here are are items that we have discussed over time for needs that we have. Um and uh and the importance of utilizing these uh this fund balance on non-recurring costs. We're not turning around and putting these into additional staff. We're um doing things that will have a direct positive impact in many ways in the classroom. And that, I think, is what is most important for us, so thank you.
Well, and the only thing I, it goes back to the presentation, the previous presentation. We are currently showing a little over a thirteen million dollar fund balance. It is completely assigned. Every dollar that's in that ba- in that fund balance is assigned to a purpose and is being put to a put to a task. There is no unassigned funds. All of the money that the school system receives goes to work on behalf of kids. Or on behalf of those people who work with kids. Um so I do, I I applaud the work that was done last year, I I applaud a fantastic financial uh report, and I also. Look forward to the fact that we're able to do some of the things that we thought we might not be able to do. Because of the the fund balance that we, the assigned fund balance that we have moving forward. Thanks.
Anything else? All right, may I have a motion for this recommended action, I am?
I move that the Board of Education approve the presented increase in the budget for fiscal year two thousand and nineteen. And approve sub-middle of this budget adjustment to the commissioners of St. Mary's County for their approval as required by the Annotated Code of Maryland.
Throw the second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion care? All right, thank you very much. Okay. Mr. Wyant, oh, there you go, security cameras.
Good morning again.
Good morning.
So everything is flowing very nicely this morning, because we're going right into, let's moving fast and. Fast and furious, if you will, with our physical security projects, uh so the topic of this morning is the security cameras, and we have been working. Uh since I was last here, but uh to talk about what the plan is for that moving forward. Uh and today, um I'm happy to report that we have a maintenance service agreement, contract agreement for camera installation that we'd like to bring before you from Johnson Controls. Um request approval for the use of the NJPA Sourcewell Contract, uh zero-three-one-five-one-seven dash JHN. For the purchase of service agreement and new replacement camera system installations with Johnson Controls. Uh the estimated cost for FY nineteen will incur include the service agreement of one hundred and thirty thousand dollars. That's also the licensing for the current cameras, getting them upgraded completely. And new Amer- ca- new camera installations at a cost of approximately thirty thousand, thirty thousand dollars per school. And again, that will vary depending on each school and the number of cameras. So once again, the background, the county commissioners of St. Mary's County have provided funding in the amount of one million dollars for school safety initiatives for fiscal year two thousand and nineteen. As previously presented to the Board of Education on September twelfth, two thousand and eighteen, and the county commissioners of St. Mary's County on September twenty-fifth, two thousand and eighteen. A portion of these funds have been planned and designated for licensing, service and maintenance agreement and camera installation. Johnson Controls has historically supported uh St. Mary's County Public Schools with camera service and maintenance on an as-needed basis. Uh the contract, uh reference contract uh is for security and communication solutions was awarded to Johnson Controls following a national competitive solicitation process. Initiated by the National Point, National Joint Powers Alliance. The contract is valid from June thirtieth, two thousand and seventeen through June thirtieth of two thousand and twenty-one. Uh the contract will be used for service and maintenance, which we've discussed before, is absolutely critical for our capacity to continue to do the installations and maintain what we have. Uh the licensing, which is again part of the stabilization that we've discussed with the cameras themselves, as well as new camera installations. And as you know, we've identified the buildings that don't have cameras, they, we have developed a timeline, they are first in line, priority number one to get those done. Uh maintenance includes testing, inspections, scheduled site visits for four hundred and forty fixed cameras and preventative maintenance and a three-year AMETIS software service agreement. So with that, I am recommending to the board a consideration for approval of the use of the reference contract for camera service.
I have no questions for you at this time, you have a lovely presentation, so thank you.
Um I have a question, one area that was highlighted was under the security equipment, it says special tools equipment to test devices. So is there any other equipment that we as a school system need to provide for them to be able to do their?
No, we actually talked to uh the representatives from Johnson Controls, and there's some electronic monitoring equipment, uh frequencies regarding uh the tech, the cabling that goes to the cameras, those kinds of things. They they bring all that with them. Uh the only, nothing that we would need to purchase, there are occasionally a a few cameras that they can't reach because of where they're at in the ceiling. Uh and you know, they have to wind up renting a lift or something like that, but I don't see any other, you know, cost associated with this to us. I think this is gonna be extremely helpful to us. Uh both ourselves and information technology and building capacity to keep this system running and move forward with the new installations, so.
All right, thank you.
Uh are all your cameras hardwired?
I'm sorry?
Are all the cameras hardwired?
Yes.
So there's no, uh, Bluetooth or?
No.
So nobody can hack into it?
No, sir, no.
I don't have any questions, thank you.
No questions, thank you.
Yep.
Um, when would you anticipate that you would begin this work?
I brought our tentative plan. I was just sharing with Mr. Howard in the back and we have, we've agreed informally that this is something we can accomplish. Uh, so we plan to issue, uh, expectations letter to Johnson Control this week with the help of, uh, fiscal services and Ms. Costner there. Uh, to forward that out to them and, uh, the schedule right now is that we hope to have. Uh, one, two, three, four, four of the schools done before December.
Excellent.
And some other supporting areas moving for, and these are the schools that don't, I, I don't want to commit to which site yet because we're still working out. They have to do the walkthroughs and we've already got those planned. We talked about that. They're coming down next week to start that.
But this is for the six, correct?
This for the nine that.
Four, okay.
Don't have any.
Sites that do not have cameras. They're, they're priority number one. Uh, ultimately, uh, by May of two thousand nineteen. Is our goal, that everyone will have security cameras. Uh, and, uh, as, as again, as I've said, it's pretty aggressive timeline, uh, but we had a meeting with Johnson Controls earlier this week and said, can you do this? This, if this is the expectation and they have clearly expressed to us their confidence that they're going to be able to accomplish this, this timeline, so.
Excellent, thank you.
Okay. May I have a motion?
I move that the board approve the use of NJPA Sourcewell Contract. Number O three one five one seven dash JHN. With Johnson Controls for the maintenance, licensing and installation of St. Mary's County Public Schools' security camera systems. Approval is requested to use this pricing contract as funding permits throughout the duration of the contract, which may be valid through June thirtieth, two thousand twenty-one.
Do I have a second?
I have a second.
Others in favor?
Aye.
opposed? Motion carrying. Thank you very much. Does anyone have anything else?
No ma'am.
Okay.
Trick or treat time. Um, and with that, we are adjourned.
Well done.
I thought it was gonna be a deep link, maybe I was like, no.